Good evening, welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. We are a deciding body that's been appointed by your town council to make recommendations and decisions on land use matters within the town of Los Gatos. We welcome your attendance and certainly encourage your participation tonight. If you do plan on speaking, I do ask that you submit a speaker's card. It looks like this. They can be located on the back of the chamber benches. And we do need that so that we have your name and address accurately reflected in our minutes. And just a reminder, if you can silence all of your electronic devices before we begin. Ms. Bailey, do you mind doing roll call tonight?
Commissioner Bujua.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Vice Chair Jensen.
Here.
Chair Seauk.
Here.
And Commissioner Erickson has an excused absence.
Okay. And Vice Chair Jensen, do you mind doing tonight's pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, in our packet, we have minutes from our last meeting, which was on October 12th. Are there any questions or comments to the minutes? If not, could I get a motion? Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. I'll move that we adopt the minutes as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Bujua, seconds. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. It passes 6-0, 6-0 with Commissioner Erickson excused. Written communications, we do have two desk items, one for item number three and one for item number four. And requested continuances, we have none for tonight. And subcommittee reports. Commissioners, I can't remember if there were any subcommittee meetings in between since our last. Okay? And just for those in the audience, in addition to serving on the commission, many of the commissioners serve on at least one other subcommittee, and this is usually the time when we provide updates on that. And we're now at verbal communications. And this is the time where anyone in the audience can speak on an item that is not on an agenda. So if you would like to speak, I do not have any cards, and I don't see anyone moving forward. So we'll go ahead and move straight to our public hearings. Actually, we have one consent item. Consent calendar, we have 1165 Happy Acres Road, conditional use permit U-11010. We will not be discussing this item and just calling a consent unless anyone would like to pull it for discussion. I see no one moving, so would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Jensen?
I move adoption of the consent calendar, which consists of item number one, conditional use permit application U-11-010 with the conditions as contained in our staff report.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Talisfor, seconds? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 6-0. Now we move to continued public hearings. This is item number two. It is architecture and site application S-11-023, located at 17350 High Street. Ms. Mosley, will you provide tonight's staff report?
I will, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The appeal for the application was considered by the Planning Commission on September 28, 2011. The Planning Commission continued the item with the direction to consider ways to further address the neighbors' concerns regarding privacy, windows, landscaping, and heightened The applicant has addressed the neighbors' concerns with the following changes. They've removed the windows from the south side of bedroom three and frosted the windows in both the master bedroom closet and bathroom. The applicant has also lowered the proposed grade for the single-story garage by one foot and provided a step-down approach to the two-story house by cutting the residence into the existing grade by two feet. The applicant has limited the cut to a maximum of two feet in hopes of retaining the seven trees. Grading beyond the two-foot cut would greatly increase the likelihood that all the existing trees would require removal. Staff has discussed the changes with the town's consulting arborist. If the revised plans are approved, the arborist's report will be updated to incorporate additional mitigation measures to reduce tree impacts. While the effective height of the residence will be lowered in relation to the neighboring structures, the massing of the residence will not change, and the house will have the same height when viewed from the street. Staff is in support of the revised plans with the notation that the additional grading is not generally supported within the town standards and guidelines, but staff recommends that the commission grant the appeal and approve the project and the revised plans provided by the applicant, along with the revised conditions provided in the staff report. This completes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Commissioner Bujua, before we move forward with this, I just wanted to make a quick announcement for anyone, those that are waiting. Item number four has been withdrawn, so if you're here for that matter, 121 Johnson Avenue, did want to make that announcement, that it's been withdrawn. Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to comment, because I was missing, I was not here on the 28th. I did review our televised version of the hearing, so I will be fully involved this evening, having reviewed everything.
Okay, thank you. And any other disclosures? Commissioner Bujua?
Sorry, I had a question of staff, not a disclosure.
It looks like no further disclosures. Go ahead with your question.
Thank you. At the last hearing, we heard evidence from neighbors that because of the odd grades in the area, that some of them have drainage issues. Is staff concerned at all about the drainage issue? Are we creating a problem here by lowering this parcel two feet? Maybe engineer could...
Engineering has reviewed it, and they can comment better on that discussion.
They do have some challenges. They have to put in some French drain. They have to be very creative for the driveway to make sure the water doesn't drain into the garage during the high, you know, rain. So, you know, with the proposed design, there's additional measures that they have to do in order to make it work.
If I could follow up, but even without lowering into the site two feet, they still have to put in those measures? Or is this solely because they're lowering the parcel two feet?
It is solely because they lower the site. The previous design, it has positive drainage to the street.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I saw your hand up.
The follow-up question was what I would have asked.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public testimony. Just a reminder that the way we'll do this, we'll have the appellant speak first, and then the applicant, and then the public will have an opportunity. You'll have three minutes. After we close that, we'll have the applicant again with three minutes, and then the appellate has the final. Okay? And I believe Mr. Brooks, are you speaking on behalf of the appellate?
Yes.
Okay. If you could just state your name and address when you get to the podium.
William Brooks, Law Firm, Brooks &amp; Hess, Campbell, California. I'm here on behalf of the appellate, Terry Hall, who was unable to be with us in September because she was out of town on business, but she is here this evening. Mr. Black, Michael Black, the applicant and I met on the site and discussed the proposal that he had offered to you at the end of the hearing on September 28, which you may remember, after the hearing had closed, he said, "Well, what about if we lower the garage a foot and the building two feet?" So we met on the site, and he showed me what he had in mind. And subsequent to that, prepared the plans, which have been submitted to you, showing the reduction of a foot and two feet. The changes in the window treatment, acknowledgement of the frosting of several of the windows in the back. I passed that on to my client, and she to the neighbors. We received copies of the plans, we reviewed them, we talked with all of the neighbors, and got unanimous approval, both my client and all of the neighbors, that this was an acceptable proposal to the neighbors. I communicated that to Mr. Black and received an email that was done in the middle of the night, Sunday night, Monday morning, essentially withdrawing that agreement that I understood that we had, that he would be supporting the application as submitted to you in early October, the plans as submitted to you in early October. And he can speak for himself as to what his concerns are, but from our standpoint, it looks fine. Staff has raised the concern about the drainage issue, and while it may require some creative effort, staff is apparently convinced that that can be done, because they are recommending approval. Staff has also indicated some concerns about whether if more trees had to be taken out, that would have an impact on the appearance of the home. As submitted, the plan isn't calling for more trees to be taken out, number one. Number two, if more trees had to be taken out, if you've read the arborist's report carefully, the arborist has very little positive to say about the landscaping that's there now, referring to it, among other things, as a confused mess. But the trees that already are going to be taken out are the ones which would impact the view of the building from the neighbors, from the north and from the west. So the removal of any additional trees that might or might not be necessary won't impact that view of the buildings. And in the long run, and these people live there for the long run, if there is a re-landscaping of that property, that's all to the good. So we do support it. We hope that you will support it. Mr. Black will have the opportunity to explain to you why he apparently is not supporting it. As I said, all of the neighbors are here tonight, as they were in September, with the exception of two, Mr. Potavani, who unfortunately had a stroke and is in the hospital. But before that happened, he committed by email to supporting this. And one other gentleman, who was out of town on business, Mr. Nozarien, and he has indicated by email also his support of it. So you do have unanimity among the neighbors for the plan as submitted, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Okay, thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Mr. Spalding, will you be speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Spalding, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. The owner wanted me to, well, first of all, we think we've addressed all the privacy issues with the moving the window off the east wall, excuse me, the south wall of the bedroom, moving it around to the east, and frosting everything else, and planting the trees along the property line. So the remaining issue really is the two feet higher that the building is. And so we quickly threw this revision together, dropping the two feet. But upon subsequent reflection, the owner doesn't like the idea of dropping it two feet, and he wants me to point out to you why. So this is the front of the house, here, the garage. So it wanted me to point out to you, there's already a three-foot retaining wall right along our garage here, and then another one on the neighbor's property. And dropping the garage a foot, it's pretty much level right now, so dropping it a foot, we're going to slope down, there'll be a drainage swale that crosses down to this lower part. So it's possible, but it's not as graceful as it is currently. Then there's also, in the back of the house, there's already, it's mostly obscured by ivy, but there's already a 30-inch retaining wall in the back corner that's... That existing retaining wall is right here. And so when we lower this house down, we're going to have a four-foot, a new four-foot retaining wall, and then there's going to be a six-foot fence. So from our patio, it's a 10-foot wall right to the south. So, you know, when you had a chance to step back and think about it, the owner thought that that was going to make the backyard unattractive. And so wanted to ask the commission to approve it without the two-foot cut, which also has the benefit of not endangering the trees that we're still trying to save here. It also has the benefit of lessening the quantity of cut, which, as the staff says, is normally against the town's guidelines.
Commissioner Jensen?
Just want to make sure I understand your client's position. I take it that the frosting of the windows and the moving of the window from the south to the east is still fine?
That's all fine. It was only the two foot down.
Just the cut? Thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I had originally understood, and maybe I missed this, that there was going to be a one-foot cut and a two-foot cut.
The garage down one, the house down two.
So what I want to know is, I now understand that your client doesn't want the two-foot cut. Where is he on the one-foot cut?
On the garage? Leave the garage alone.
Not drop.
Zero cut.
Zero, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Spalding. So I'm going to now call the people that have asked to speak. You'll have three minutes. When I call your name and you come to the podium, if you could just state your name and address before you start speaking. First speaker, Susan Marshall? Actually, I have that wrong. Marshall, Marshall Susan? Is there a Marshall?
S-U-J.
Okay. And then tell me your last name.
S-U-J.
S-U-J, okay. S-U-J-A-N?
R-E-I-N, yes, sorry.
Okay.
That's an N. Happened three years ago.
And then if you could just verify, this is, I'm not making, I'm assuming this is you?
That's me.
Okay, and could you... Thank you. Okay.
Hi, I'm Marshall Fryman from 17380 High Street. So last we were understanding is the neighbors, we had all discussed it and came up with the proposal, and the short answer is, you know, that's the way we had all left it, and we think it should still remain that way, that they do the cuts.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. Next speaker is, guys are really, Victor Ratner?
Vicky.
Vicky Ratner, sorry.
I'm also going to lend my support to everything that I said last time, as well as what Mr. Brooks said this time, that we agree with the revised proposal as originally proposed by Mr. Black. And I'd also like to mention that the retaining wall between their house and mine is not, is incomplete. It's made out of, a lot of it's rotted wood, and would be insufficient as it stands now. I think it's too hard to see on those photos that were pictured up there. One would have to come and do a site visit specifically for that, to see it. And that's it.
Any questions? You do have one question? Commissioner Smith?
I just want to clarify the retaining wall from your perspective, looking into it. So today, it's three feet, even if it's made out of rotting wood.
And some of it doesn't exist at all.
Okay. But in the future, it will be 10 feet. Did I understand that correct, Mr. Spalding?
That includes fence.
Okay, so...
That's the backyard, not the side.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
It's the back. So it will be higher than it is today.
Okay, so I'm understanding that they're going to redo it.
And it will be higher. Am I correct, Mr. Spalding?
Not for her.
Not for her, not for her corner.
Actually, Commissioner Smith, if we can...
Sorry, I know, I understand.
We'll ask staff to clarify that.
All right. Okay, all right. I was just thinking about your perspective, because I know you had a shadow issue, but you no longer have the shadow issue.
Well, I was going, thank you for bringing that up. The shadow issue is that part, I mean, the sun rises in the east, so that is going to cast a shadow on my backyard, and then as the sun moves, therefore, the shadow gets cast on the other side. But I'm going to let go of that issue, so to speak, because the other ones are much more important.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Talisfor? Ms. Ratner, you have another question?
I think you had a privacy concern.
Yes.
Is that true, because of the window? Now, the window, one window has been moved around to the other side of the house, and the other windows have been frosted. So does that resolve your issue about privacy?
That helps, but what's left is it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, and we spent a lot of time talking about that last time.
What...
In terms of all the, well, several things, number one.
The windows don't fit in with the neighborhood?
No, 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 the house, at the level it is, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. And Ms. Mosley, do you mind clarifying for us exactly the fence, the height of the fence?
So I believe what was trying to be communicated is that there is an existing approximately 30-inch retaining wall that runs between the two neighbors' properties, and then there's a six-foot fence on that. There will be an additional cut to do between a two and a four-foot wall for cutting into, for cutting that, the site in for the house to be stepped in. So that's where you're getting the 10-foot from where basically the deck of the patio is to the top of the fence.
Okay, any other questions of staff before we, okay, thank you, Ms. Ratner.
I just want to be really sure about this. The proposed patio, if it were at the grade level, would still have eight feet looking up from the patio. So the new one would make it 10 feet. I'm talking about from the new, the new proposed residence, not the way the neighbors are looking in.
Correct. Approximately from the top of the patio to the top of the fence would be approximately 10 feet. It'll vary along that stretch because the grade changes. And so it's a max, the retaining wall is a maximum height of four feet, it's not going to be four feet along the entire stretch.
All right. And so the old way, it would have been eight feet anyway, because we're just, the two feet is just dropped down.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker, Peter Zakeen. One for three.
Hi, I'm Peter Zakeen, 17370 High Street. So we had a privacy issue from our perspective also. That has been addressed by the frosting of the windows and also the south-facing windows being moved to the east side. We're happy with that. We're happy with the planting. The only thing that's left is, we, you know, I approve, you know, cutting it into the hillside. It's going to look like the rest of the two-story homes in the area. Right now, it's a single-story home. It's sitting on top of the grade, and all I want to say is the other two feet will make it blend in the neighborhood a little bit, a little bit better. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. And last speaker is Phil Coucher.
Phil Coucher, 16900 Cypress Way. I intended to come here up until a day or so ago and congratulate everyone on a process well done. The plans came to the town, the DRC approved them, a neighbor appealed, it came to you, you directed it back and had the developer negotiate with the neighbors. There was a series of emails, some negotiations, plans resubmitted to the town, excuse me, with the approval of the neighbors. And then, here we go. No negotiation, no plan, stepping back. Kind of surprising to me that this, all these negotiations took place for your direction, and now we have a developer who's backing out of those negotiations. Maybe a little bit disingenuous, some may say sneaky, but I guess from his standpoint, he's got nothing to lose. And the worst that can happen tonight is you guys approve what he's already submitted to you, which I'm certainly hoping you do. Here we have a piece of property, a developer coming in, and essentially doubling the livable square footage of a house, a piece of property that's at a single-story on it right now, and is proposing, again, essentially doubling the square footage for a two-story house. He states that retaining walls, you know, aren't fair. And an email I saw from him to one of the other neighbors was that he didn't feel they were fair. You know, I don't know, I don't quite understand what's unfair to him that essentially virtually all of the other neighbors, myself, all the way down the hill, have had to do over the years as these new homes have been built. Retaining walls have been built. It's part of the hillside. It's part of the whole process that's been going on up there for years and years and years. And this is a very unique piece of property. It jettisons over High Street and Cypress. It's elevated, so building a two-story house out there without mitigating some of the height issue is going to make it stick out. We have a developer who bought a piece of property, speculated on what he could build. And there was no guarantee when he bought this piece of property of what he could put on there. Just because he can, doesn't mean he should. I feel strongly that the two-feet reduction is going to greatly improve the look of that house and fit better into the neighborhood. So I would ask the commission to approve the revised plans. Thank you.
Mr. Coucher, it looks like you have a question. Commissioner O'Donnell?
As I understand what the, there's so many parties in this one, appellate and appellate and all that, but in any event, what the other side is saying is they're going to have a 10-foot effect, i.e., they're going to have a six-foot fence on top of what is essentially a four-foot retaining wall. Now, that doesn't sound good to me, but what I'm wondering is, since everybody's telling me this is consistent with the neighborhood, cutting in two feet, I'm curious what the neighbors in the neighborhood backyards are like insofar as the height of the fence, the effective height of the fence because of any retaining walls. Do other people have retaining walls upon which the fence is built?
You have to ask some of the surrounding neighbors. I don't get into their backyards often.
How about your backyard?
I'm on an acre that goes upside of a hill, so I've got a half a dozen, eight retaining walls surrounding my house, all three sides. The only side that doesn't is the front, and I'm up 80 feet, 85 feet from the street.
No, what I wonder is your backyard, do you have a 10-foot barrier in your backyard, which is your fence?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got an eight or nine-foot retaining wall at the back of my property, but it's not, it's not equivalent, because that's another 100 feet behind my house. It's, I'm on an acre, so my retaining walls don't have that effect of the, you know, that these people are going to have.
Okay.
There certainly are other, you know, houses in the neighborhood that, you know, when you walk into their backyards, you know, they're down below, you know, grade.
Yeah, I'm just trying to visualize it. I did look at the property.
Yeah.
And I, I'm trying to visualize how everybody's impacted, and you've been...
The neighbor below me has a, I believe, a three or four-foot retaining wall, and then some lawn area, and then their six- or seven-foot fence. So the ones directly east of them have that same type of effect.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Spalding? Just a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Black would like me to remind you that this, the existing building site has already been cut into the hill, has retaining walls on the two uphill sides. So it already, it already is cut. So this is cutting two additional feet from that existing cut pad. And also to remind you that the way the house is designed, on the two street sides, the second story is well set back from the first story, so when you look up at the house as it sits on that raised pad, the perception will be of that first story primarily the open front porch that wraps around the corner, which is the intersection of Cypress and High Street. So the perception of bulk will be reduced by that, that set-back second story. And finally, he said he would prefer if, if you were going to, rather than approve it with a two-foot cut, he would rather it not be approved.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did you participate in the settlement conversations that went on prior to this evening?
No.
So at what point... So at what point did you find out that a, arguably a settlement had been reached?
Just a quick conversation immediately after the last hearing, actually.
And you'd heard nothing further until?
If maybe perhaps the applicant could come up and you can both, he can address us directly?
Well, I indicated to, to Mr. Brooks that we could only, just, just looking at it after the hearing, that two feet was probably all we could practically cut it into the hill. So that's what, that's what we drew up to submit. And then the, the talks between the neighbors went, went on after that. So we, we kind of drew this up quickly and then everything proceeded after that.
I'm just trying to understand the background because when I watched the 28th and I watched this evening, as I recall, at the very end of the hearing, I think you, as you correctly said, offered the possibility of this two-foot drop. Subsequent to that, apparently you met with Mr. Brooks and others and everybody thought we, you had an agreement. And subsequent to that, you decided, no, that agreement wouldn't work. I'm wondering what it was that changed everything from the time you agreed to it to the time you didn't agree to it?
Well, these plans were submitted.
Mr. Black, I'm assuming, if you could just identify yourself so that we have you on record?
I'm Mr. Michael Black, the applicant. So what I'd like to say is these plans were submitted one week after our actual hearing. So I met with Mr. Brooks two days afterwards. We went over the grade difference, we saw what we could do, we said we'd work on it and we came up with the, the threshold of lowering it two feet and one foot. We would have to do some creative drainage, stuff like that, but we thought it could probably work. So we rushed it in because I want to get back to you, you know, get a decision made as soon as possible. So that was the decision. Subsequently, we went back, thought it over, looked at the retaining walls, saw the big tree and said, this isn't going to work. It's not going to look good. It's not going to have good drainage. We already have a four-foot cut on the, on the eastern side, a two-foot cut on the south side. Why do we need to do more? So that's what, that's what happened.
Thank you.
Any other questions of either Mr. Spalding or Mr. Black? Okay. And Mr. Brooks, you have three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we do have one more question. Is it of Mr. Spalding or Mr.?
Spalding, yes, that's fine.
I apologize for that.
So the 10-foot, approximately 10-foot fence that now might occur because of this two-foot cut?
Would be a four-foot retaining wall with a six-foot fence, yeah.
Right. Can you tell me, or show me on the plans exactly how, is it the entire backyard and side yard? Is it only the backyard? And also, how many feet are there between the fence and the house? Is it on Exhibit A1 dot one?
It's, it's this stretch right here.
Yeah. And how many, is that along the entire back wall?
It, the retaining wall is, starts here near grade and then climbs to four feet by the time you get back here.
So, so it's not going to be 10 feet the entire distance?
Yes, as you, as you slope towards High Street, it slopes down. But the highest part is where the backyard of the house is. The, the highest part.
And how many feet is that approximately that it goes across the backyard?
In, in this direction?
Yes, in length.
It's about 20 feet.
I'm not speaking about the entire, I'm talking about where it would impact the backyard. Yes, from there.
From here to, to back here, that's 30 feet.
And that will be the 10, that'll be 10 feet?
Yeah, that whole length would be a four-foot retaining wall with a six-foot fence on top. And then when you get back here, there's, there's already a four-foot retaining wall back here that, that we're leaving alone.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson and then Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Spalding, how many feet between the rear door of the house and the wall? So how much backyard do they, how much between the house and the 10-foot fence?
That's kind of the side yard. So it's, from the edge of the house to the fence is 13 and a half feet. The retaining wall is set in a bit so we can get that planting strip that they asked for. So the, we're, we're at about 10 feet to the four-foot retaining wall. Then there's the three-foot planter and the six-foot fence.
Commissioner Smith, did you have a question?
I did. I, I revisited the property today and I still have a question on the plans and the fence and the retaining wall. Is it necessary to put the fence on top of the retaining wall?
We have it offset by three feet so that we could put the, the trees they asked for between the retaining wall and the fence. So they're, they're actually not built right on top of each other. They're offset by this much.
And how high will those trees grow?
They, the neighbors wanted us to plant trees that are no more than 25 feet tall.
So when you're looking out the back door, even if the fence is two feet higher, the trees are going to be much higher than that?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, if I read the plans correctly and I looked again today, the majority of the patio seems to be on the side of the house.
Well, it's in the south, it's, it's on the east and the south corner there. That's, this is all the, the main patio right there.
So the, the 13 feet is actually from the back door, more or less, or the back?
From, from the building, not, not the patio. The patio is only, comes to within four feet at the retaining wall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Mr. Brooks?
We've had a lot of talk about a 10-foot wall. Commissioner Smith, you put your finger right on it. They're not going to be looking at a 10-foot wall. They're going to be looking at what they've agreed to. This is 20 or 25-foot-high planting barrier, which was there for the purpose of providing privacy. So whether it's an eight-foot wall, a six-foot wall, a two-foot wall, or a 10-foot wall, or a 20-foot wall, they've got 20 feet of plantings that are going to be there anyway. So the visual impact of this Berlin Wall is really not a concern. The proposal was Italian cypresses, you know, and they start being bushy from the ground up. There's an issue as to whether Italian cypresses can actually be controlled to 20 or 25 feet and so that may not be what ultimately gets planted. But whatever is planted, that's what will provide the barrier on the south side, not the wall, not the fence. I think most of my comments had really referred to that, but let me just take a quick look. Ms. Mosley mentioned that, and this is in response to the question of whether it's a four-foot retaining wall or not. She mentioned in her presentation that in fact, the wall slopes and as you get toward the west, it declines. Likewise, in the front, what's referred to as a two-foot wall by the applicant is on the plans, maximum two feet. And in fact, I think if you look at it, where it starts on the eastern side, near the Deodar Cedar, the large cedar in front, it's like six inches. It's two feet when it gets to its westernmost extension, but that's a, an even slope. So do remember that the concerns regarding the wall, it's, it's not a uniform two feet all over where it's going along past, between the cedar and the house. It's much lower than that. I think that covers the issues. Except Mr. Spalding did not participate in the conversations that I had with Mr. Black as he indicated that was all right after the, right after the meeting. Those other conversations were a week later up at the site and back and forth by email. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
The reason everybody, with one exception, once it recessed two feet is to affect bulk and mass?
Yes, to reduce that, the appearance of the bulk and mass. We've heard the comment about, well, the, the porch around the outside will make it appear less. To the extent that it means that it will look as if the second story is offset by the porch roof and the extension of porch out from the first, it simply provides a step appearance, but the height.
I'm trying to understand from what angle the bulk and mass is, is the critical issue because we just said there's going to be 25-foot trees in the back. So clearly.
From, from the across?
Let me just finish my, my question. So clearly, it's not a problem in, in that direction. So as you face high and as you face the side street there, and I mean, you've got like three streets there, as I recall, these three names. So tell me, which are the streets that will be benefited by the, the dropping of the two feet?
The north side of Cypress Way, the corner of Cypress and High, directly across the street from his home, from this new home, and High Street on the west side of High Street. And it does in fact, impact both Ms. Ratner and the appellate who are above them because it will drop the roof line down two feet. And that makes a difference.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll close public testimony and I look to the commissioners for any questions or clarifications that they need from staff.
Yes, I have a question. I have a question of the town attorney and this is just procedural. Mr. Spalding, if I understood correctly, stated that the original applicant wished to withdraw his plans if, did I understand that correctly? If we, if we voted in favor of the appellate? I'm trying to get all these.
So what we're recommending is that you make two motions. You first make a motion either to uphold or deny the appeal and then make a second motion as to whether you would approve the initial plans that were before you in September. You could also make a motion to accept the revised plans that were before you tonight even though applicants represented, clear that that's not their preference. Or some sort of revision, as you do on any other project, is approve a project with your own revisions. But we would recommend separate motions on this, given the distinct nature of the appeal.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to follow up on that, either with staff or town attorney. As I understood, Mr. Spalding, the indication was not that any plans would be withdrawn, but, but that the preference was please deny instead of approve this. And I'm assuming that whether we approve it or deny it, it's still subject to appeal from whoever wants to appeal it to the town council, correct?
That is correct. Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yep. This is what, I'm going to change horses here for a minute. This is getting back to the trees that, that are to be planted and it's indicated on the plans of A1, Exhibit 14. The trees to be planted are oak, crepe, myrtle, and Italian cypress. Has that been, is this, I mean, has this been reviewed by the arborist or was this, how, how did we get to the, the Italian cypress?
The Italian cypress were part of the proposal that was within the revision. We later heard that the neighbors do not prefer the Italian cypress. This is not a final landscaping plan. It is to show what the intention is. But we do have it on record that the neighbors did not prefer the Italian cypress.
All right. So this, this is, this is still up in the air?
The landscaping can still be modified, correct?
Okay. And if they, if this were to go through and everyone agreed, then would that, can we, could that landscaping plan come back to the commission on consent or just as a, a review or, it doesn't have to be at a hearing, but how would we get to see that?
Well, it's a condition number seven and it's to satisfaction of the director of community development and the town arborist.
I saw that, but, okay. All right.
So if what Commissioner Talisfor is asking is that if you want to modify the condition, that would have to be part of the motion.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Since there are no more questions, any comments and thoughts that commissioners would like to share before we move towards a motion?
I'll, I'll state for the record that I do find it disappointing that the efforts of the parties, when they thought they came together, didn't happen because there was great promise for that. And I'm not, I still am not certain today if the reason that Mr. Black has, does not want to do this is monetary, if it is in fact architectural. I, I don't have a clear understanding of why the, the proposed revisions are not acceptable. So I'll just state that.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm not focused on the fact that the parties thought they had an agreement. Clearly, you know, lawyers look at things and decide whether they have enforceable agreements and I don't think that's the issue here tonight. The issue here tonight is, would have been very nice if we had an agreement. But secondly, my understanding is that the agreement, if carried out, would work. In other words, the applicant was prepared to do, do so until he thought about it for a while and I don't question his thinking about it. I don't even question what he came, came up with. But now, as opposed to the 28th, we have before us a, a plan which I believe works. And I believe the, the applicant shows that it works. He doesn't like it now, but it does work. So I think we're, we've advanced from the 28th to the present time. And I agree with, with Commissioner Smith that it sounds like it's a financial issue and I can empathize with that. I don't know if it costs more or whether it affects the value or whatever, but I'm not sure that's really our concern. So it, it appears to me, and maybe there's, because I was not here on the 28th, although I did watch it, that whereas on the 28th, it was a good deal more uncertainty because we didn't know exactly what a solution would be, we now have a solution that as near as I can tell, the applicant's architect would have been able to carry through. So I think we're further along than we are at the 28th. So that's just sharing my thought before somebody makes a motion.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Bouchard?
I have to admit that at the last hearing, doing my own homework and site visits, I, you know, I was fairly inclined to, to approve the design. I thought it was a well-designed home. It is an eclectic neighborhood. It's a difficult lot. There's a lot of grade challenges in that neighborhood. So when I was looking at it from a neighborhood compatibility standard, I thought it was okay, but obviously the neighbors don't. And so you've got to give a lot of weight to the neighbors when you're looking at neighborhood compatibility, right? So I, I supported the, the motion to go back and try and, try and look at this again. What, what's giving me pause is, is asking someone to design something that we know is going to cause additional drainage issues. That's, that's the one thing that's giving me a little bit of pause here. But at the same time, you know, we have policies in this town encouraging the use of sellers to minimize and to hide the bulk and mass. And that, you know, a seller feature would be a lot more grading and a lot more difficult than, than a two-foot pad cut. So I think I'm, I'm leaning toward supporting the design with the two-foot cut because as Commissioner O'Donnell stated, it, it does seem to be feasible and it does seem to be something that's acceptable to the neighbors and, but I, I'd love to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say.
Any other commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Make a motion?
Certainly. And just a reminder, we are looking for two motions. The first one would be upholding or denying the original appeal.
So my motion would be based upon the testimony tonight and what we heard at our last meeting on September 28th, that I share Commissioner Bouchard's concern about drainage. The neighbors have certainly asked for that issue. So my motion would be to grant the appeal of the Development Review Committee, which approved the demolition of a single-family residence and construction of a new single-family So to grant that appeal and approve the revised plans that were submitted to us in our packet. So to grant that appeal and approve the revised plans that were submitted to us in our packet with the conditions and... That are contained in our staff report, as well as specifically the modification of condition number seven, which is contained on Page 4 of our staff report in Section I'm looking for what... And I make the finding that, as required by Section 15303 of the State Environmental Guidelines, that this project is exempt from secret review, that it's consistent with Section 29.10.09030E of the Town Code for Demolition of a Single Family Residence, and that it is consistent with 2920150 of the Town Code for Granting and Approval of an Architecture and Site Application. And that's based on the testimony that we've received in two hearings, and the indications that we've had from our staff report, and the indications we've had tonight, that although challenging, the drainage on this site would work.
Okay. So again, this is... The motion is to grant the appeal of the DRC approval. Do I have a second on that?
I think it's just a combined motion. Do we have to vote separately on each motion, or can we combine it?
We're recommending that you vote... Make that two separate motions.
Okay. So I make the first motion, and then make the second motion that I combined, and we can split them up. But I'm not going to state them again, for the record.
Okay. So can I get a second on either both, or Commissioner Bouchard?
I'll second both motions.
Okay. And are there any questions or clarifications that are needed? Oh, Ms. Bailey.
I would just like clarification on the wording for condition number seven. What direction?
As contained in our staff report. It's suggested how it's modified. On Page 4 of the staff report.
And I could agree with that, even though I had the question that I'd like to see it back.
Do you want me to read it into the record?
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to comment, too, because two commissioners already have. And when I watched this, I thought the house was well-designed. And had I been here, I might not have been... I mean, you do have to take very seriously the neighbors' concerns, and I do. However, I thought the house was well-designed. So what I would have done that night, I don't have to speculate. But I am saying that if I were hearing this matter, brand-new, and did not have this history, I would be more sympathetic to the application. But only because of the history we've seen, and the fact that we essentially have a plan now that satisfies the neighbors, and was satisfactory to the applicant, do I feel that it's sufficiently different to go ahead and support both motions, which I intend to do.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so both motions pass 6-0, with Commissioner Erickson excused tonight. Okay. Now, would you like to cite appeal rights?
Yes, this decision is appealable to the town council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. There is a fee for filing an appeal, and the appeal forms are located upstairs in the town clerk's office.
Okay, commissioners, we are now at Agenda Item Number 3. And again, just a reminder, for those that may have walked in later, Agenda Item Number 4, 121 Johnson Avenue, has been withdrawn. So if anyone is here for that item, we will not be hearing that item tonight. So we are now at Item Number 3, Architecture and Site Application S-11-063, located at 321 West Main Street. And Ms. Mosley, are you ready for your second staff report?
Just barely. The subject property is a 6,895-square-foot interior lot that is zoned R1D-LHP, and currently contains a 1,041-square-foot single-family residence with a 616-square-foot detached garage. In 2004, a minor residential application for a new second-story addition was approved, but expired in 2006. On May 12, 2011, the applicant submitted a new minor residential application to construct a second-story addition at 321 West Main Street. After two reviews by the Historic Preservation Committee, staff sent out notices of pending approval to all adjacent neighbors, and staff received three letters of opposition from the adjacent neighbors during that noticing period. The applicant and property owners have attempted to work with the neighbors regarding minor changes in landscape screening, but were unable to find an arrangement that addressed all the neighbors' concerns at the same time that all the neighbors could agree with. As a result, the application is being forwarded to the Planning Commission for review. The applicant and property owner, like I said, have attempted to work with the neighbors, but have been able to come to a solution. It appears that the neighbors' concerns come down to different landscaping solutions, and it may not be feasible to fully comply with the desires of each neighbor. The desk item provided tonight provides additional clarification from two of the three neighbors, and should help in the discussion this evening. Staff is supportive of the proposed plans and any landscaping solution that the commission finds most appropriate. This completes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mosley. Any questions, commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public testimony. Let's see. Okay, so Mr. DiMattei, are you speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Hark DiMattei, and I represent the Regginallys, the children, and Nicole Regginali here. We've been working with this project for several months, trying to come up with an application that everybody likes. And I think we've addressed most of the concerns. We've changed roof lines and massing of the building. And as Marnie says, we do believe it's down to landscape screening, and we're here to work with you to come up with a solution that allows us to build this family their own.
Okay. I also have a speaker card for Mr. Regginali. Were you hoping to speak together, or...
Yeah. Just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Ed Regginali.
Okay. Actually, if you could do it in the microphone.
Sure. My name is Ed Regginali. I'm the owner of the property. I've owned it since 2001. My wife Nicole and three children are here. The house is very small, you know, 1,000 square feet, and we're trying to, you know, raise a family of five in it. So we appreciate your consideration in helping us move forward with this plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And it looks like you have one question from Commissioner Johnson.
My question is, would you be prepared to execute on whatever landscaping plan the Planning Commission wanted to attach to a potential approval of your application?
I think, within reason, we would be open to that.
Not asking for a waterfall.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor, and then Commissioner Bouchard?
I do have a question. This is getting into architecture, and I noticed on the originally submitted plans on A3, on the rear elevation, you have two windows on the back. Do you see that? It's on the rear elevation on the right. And it looks like it's in a bay by the kitchen door. That's on A3.
So the question is...
So the question to the architect would be, on A3, in the recently proposed plans, the window was changed to be a one-over?
Right. It's a single hung versus a pair of double hungs.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering why that... Just it's curious to me. It looks like it might be more consistent to have the, you know, the pair of one-overs, but I was just curious.
It's because the width of the pop-out changed, which caused the window to need to be narrower. And we tried to gang two double hungs together. It got a bit narrow. But we would be open to putting a pair of double hungs there, if that's what the staff would like.
It looks like it's more consistent. I mean, it's a fine detail, but I worked on historic, and they always were about windows being consistent, dah, 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 dah. So...
We would be happy to make that a pair of double hungs.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Bouchard?
I was wanting clarification on the rear elevation, and my question got answered, so...
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, well, I have one speaker card, and then you'll... You can speak afterwards again. And I believe Robert... Is it Borba?
Burbah.
Burbah. Thank you. You'll have three minutes, and if you could just identify yourself when you get to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to present my client's position here. My name's Robert Burbah. I'm a real estate broker, and I also manage the property located at 80 Broadway. It's owned by Paul and Rebecca Tofano. They have prepared a statement that they've asked me to read to the commission tonight, as well as an adjacent neighbor, Gloria Rollins, has prepared a statement. She was unable to be here and asked me to present that for her as well. So I hope that will be acceptable. On behalf of Paul and Rebecca Tofano, their statement reads as follows. Today and in 2004, when the Regginallys first proposed an addition to their home, we have sought a solution that accommodates their need for additional space with our need for privacy. The proposed extension takes the current structure from 18 feet to 27 feet in height, and will surely impact our views and privacy, especially our back deck and pool area, and significantly impair the aesthetics and uniqueness of the home. Given the position of our home, our exposure is at an angle to the Regginali property. We believe that a landscape screening solution could be found that would not conflict with Paul Biber's desires, since it would be applied at an angle rather than running the entire length of the back fence of the Regginali property. The Regginallys proposed a planting of one tree in their corner near us. The tree they suggested, now bear with me, a Podocarpus gracielorum, would be approximately 10 feet at the time of planting, and has a growth rate of only 1 foot per year. This would take 15 to 18 years to reach a sufficient height, and as such, is clearly not acceptable. We think a landscape solution with trees of 10 feet or higher with a faster growth rate would most likely rectify the situation. Our desire is that, within a period of two years, any screening solution would reach a height of 15 to 18 feet. We continue to be open to be working with the Regginallys on developing a solution, but to date, we have not seen any proposal, as one referenced. We request that the commission not approve this proposed expansion at this time, and require that a potential landscape screening solution be developed. The second statement that I have been asked to present is on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Rollins, who live at 86 Broadway, just up the street. And the letter reads as follows. Dear Ms. Mosley and members of the Planning Commission, Eric and I, Gloria, are neighbors of the Regginallys, and we live at 86 Broadway. We sincerely apologize for not being able to attend to the hearing due to a prior commitment. Robert Burbah of Portaria was kind enough to offer to read this letter during the hearing. An advance copy will be sent to the Planning Commission. We feel very strongly that the development of 321 West Main must be properly screened to protect the privacy, enjoyment, use, and value of our property. The second-story addition where the master bedroom is where the master bedroom is, and there is a large window facing the back. Unfortunately...
Unfortunately, Mr. Burbah, that's your time limit.
Even though I'm speaking on behalf of two people?
You are speaking. And what does... We do have both copies. It's Exhibit 11 and Exhibit 12, so we actually have both letters that you've... We have this letter that you are reading, and we have the letter that you just read to us.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And any questions of Mr. Burbah? Mr. Burbah, you have one question. Commissioner Bouchard?
Since you're speaking on behalf of the neighbors, both at 80 and 86, and they're the two corners, I believe, they're not directly behind...
That's correct. Mr. Biber's property is directly behind, and these are looking in at an angle from each corner.
So what do you think the ultimate solution is? Landscaping plan?
Well, with that said, I think it can happen. I think it's just a matter of the right tree and the right placement. I think both of these people are fully willing to work to try and find a solution. They're not, you know, trying to stonewall this. I think that Tofano's position, and again, this is me speaking out of turn for them, was that there was a single solution proposed. It wasn't acceptable to them. Then it seemed to kind of go dark, and here we are at a planning commission meeting. So they were a little, I think, a little disappointed in the process, but they're totally open to making this work. They're very reasonable people. One of the things that Ms. Rollins had provided with her statement was a diagram that I don't know if I can put up here, but it kind of conveys what they'd like to see happen. And I think the same kind of thing could happen on the other side. Oh, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to have to get up. So as you can see...
Oh, and Mr. Burbah, can you take the microphone with you?
So my client's property is located here. Mr. Biber's property is here, and this is the Rollins family property here, with the site for the Regginaly's proposed build here. And this, again, was a diagram that was provided by the Rollins. Their suggestion here was for three of the Podocarpus trees to be planted in this area here. I think from their viewpoint, given enough time and a sufficient growth of those trees, that would probably address their concerns. My clients have not proposed any specific thing. They would rather have had a proposal brought to them for consideration, was kind of the felt... The feeling that I got. I don't know that they're comfortable making a proposal or a suggestion from 3,500 miles away.
But it would be fair to say that potentially two or three trees in each corner of the correct... Of an acceptable species to all parties might do the trick.
Yeah. If it'll address the coverage issue and the growth rate, I'm sure they'd be open for conversation on that. Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Talisfor?
I was out to the properties today, but can you tell me, 86 Broadway, what... Where is the privacy issue for the Rollins?
I think they're looking... And again, I'm...
No. Where are they standing on their property that it impacts their privacy?
I believe it's their master bedroom on the backside of their building.
Is that on the second floor?
Yes, ma'am. Again, I'm guessing here. I'm not speaking directly on their behalf, so I...
How many feet is that about?
I don't know.
Approximately. I was there. I don't know.
Commissioner Talisfor, did you have any other questions?
Let me ask you the same for the Tofanos.
Sure.
80. Where's their privacy issue? I think you said in the letter it was on the...
Sure. The way the Tofanos' home is set up is the main living area is on the second story of the home, and it's elevated above where the Regginaly's lot is located. So essentially, if they're on their porch, patio, pool area, they have an extensively landscaped backyard. Their concern is, is that whether they're on the decking inside the house, the master bedroom also backs to that back elevation of the house. So essentially, their concern is that the whole backside of the house will be impacted by the proposed build.
And the pool is on the...
It's on the ground... Lower level, obviously. It's on the... It backs up to this corner right here.
That's what I thought. All right.
Yeah, it's all right here.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
You speak directly for 80 Broadway, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But not for the other corner? Although you read the letter, correct? The 86 Broadway? You don't speak for them?
I have no contractual relationship with them. I am employed by the owners of 80 Broadway.
At least for 80 Broadway, could you be willing to be designated as a liaison between the town arborist, your client, and the applicant to pick appropriate trees for the screening?
Yes. I would absolutely like to.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Burbah.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have one more speaker card. It's Paul Bieber.
Hello, you guys here? Hey, Paul. I'm Paul Bieber, 84 Broadway, right over the back fence. And we've been involved with discussions with the Regginaly since the story poles went up. We were originally concerned it was a gable end in the back, which pushed the roof line and the whole flat surface quite away. I mean, it just really stuck out. I brought that up, and I suggested a Dutch gable, which brings the, you know, the gutters down. And it pushed the high ridge line back about 20 feet. And I said, it's all good. That's fine with me. Just softened up the look, and I'm absolutely fine. My wife is fine with the change, architectural change in the design. One thing I should... I want to comment on the two trees that are behind my garage, which I object to strenuously. I don't even believe that they help screen it too much. And I didn't want anything back further, because it, you know, there's trees all over the neighborhood. The Regginaly's have trees overgrowing their property. To put that... To put that then in back of my yard, I look, I like looking out past the Regginalley's house. You know, that's just my opinion. I don't think that's going to work from their perspective. I mean, I'm not sure, I was, I tried to look from their deck. I don't, I don't think they can see anything from their master bedroom. There's trees in the way if you go take a look. But anyway, that's just sort of a comment. I'm certainly open to discussions, and I think down along the line or in the corners is where trees are more properly placed to take care of the problem, including maybe one behind Eric and Gloria's garage, actually, on their own property. Just a suggestion. But as far as the Regginalley's cooperation with, with us, with my wife and myself, we're real happy with it. You know, real happy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber. It looks like you have several questions. Commissioner Smith.
Could you, just looking at that diagram, your garage, and I am intimately familiar with that neighborhood, but your garage is where those two trees would be, is that correct?
That's right.
And what you're saying is that the two trees would do what to you? They would...
Well, it sort of, it sort of hammers me in.
Because the trees would grow taller than your garage, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. They have to. Actually, another thing, just to, while we're just discussing what it is, just to the right of the two trees, I've got other trees already growing up. Not only that, let me just point it out, can I?
Can you take the mic with you? Thank you.
Just take the mic with you.
Okay.
May I put the picture up?
Mr. Bieber, do you, is this a picture?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah, that's looking up. See in the corner, to the right of my garage, there's already trees growing up, plus I've got two avocado trees on that side that would hit, how do you do this? Well, let me, do this very often. All right, anyway, right up here, there's two avocado trees, right here, which would grow up and take care of the rest of this, and there's more stuff growing up. So I don't see two trees right here, I can see a tree right here. You know, that's, that's my suggestion, and I live there, and, you know, I'm very familiar with how it goes, so I think that would do them much more good.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Talisfor?
How long have you lived at your house, Mr. Biber?
Forty years.
Okay.
Anyway, we're the longest neighbors in the, in the entire block.
So you've probably seen the trees grow up around you.
Seen lots of it, yeah.
And how far are you from the Regginalley's house?
I think from the back of my house to the, to Regginalley's is about 100 feet, 100, 105 feet.
105 feet. So I did come and visit, and I was on your deck, and I didn't, it looked pretty far away, I wasn't sure. So can you help me figure out how far then would it be from your neighbors' yards or their decks?
Well, I think the, yeah, I think the Eric and Gloria's is at least 120 feet.
And which side, is that 80 or 86?
There, if you're looking at, they're, they're on the upside. If you look at this picture, they're on the right-hand side. Not only that, is, I mean, they could, they look over the top of the house, but, yeah, they're 120 feet at least, because they're quite a bit higher also than my house. I'm the lowest one there. Tofano's is a little bit higher than mine, but...
Okay. And the Tofano's, how far are they?
Tofano's is a little further, you know, because it's on the diagonal, say 110 feet.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bieber.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no other speaker cards, and I see no one moving forward, so I'll ask the applicant again if, as a duo team, you have three minutes to respond to anything you've heard or make any closing comments.
So, thank you for, for hearing us. We are open to hearing the, the planning solutions with the arborists and working with the neighbors to get this behind us. We, we did want to point out that the screening that's there is already pretty substantial to the property to the right and to the left, because there's trees at both corners. So we're just looking for a reasonable solution, and I'll put that into motion.
And it is not our intent to impact the Bieber's view. I mean, they've been very reasonable with us, known him for a long time, and I do not want to come up with a solution that bothers them. You know, we're not, we're trying to just build a house for our family, not create problems.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Sure.
Mr. Bieber had said maybe a tree, one tree. It wasn't clear to me whether he was advocating a tree or saying, "Well, one tree wouldn't be bad," and you saw where he was pointing for the one tree. So I just wondered if you have any comments? Would a tree help anything there or not help anything?
My opinion is, I don't think a tree would help. My foundation is about 15 feet below their foundation. They're looking down at me, and there's nothing I can do about it. So I don't know how you would, I don't know what those trees would do. We're open to the solution, if that would resolve the problem. We're very open to doing it, but if you're asking my opinion, does it do anything? No.
Yeah, I was asking your opinion, so thank you.
But, but we're willing, if that helps the situation, we're willing to do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll go ahead, please have a seat. Go ahead and close the public testimony portion. Commissioners, if you have any questions or clarifications that you need from staff, otherwise feel free to share your comments or thoughts. Commissioner O'Donnell.
This is a question of staff. I mean, I've listened to this, I've looked at your report, and I know the reason we have this is because people couldn't reach agreement. But based on the facts I've got, if this commission were to think that some screening would be helpful, and I'm not sure I do, but I take it the staff, if someone were to describe what they're trying to do, what they're trying to accomplish, and what the maximum height they need, I take it the staff would be certainly better qualified than I to recommend the kinds of plants, which you could have done had the parties not reached disagreement. Is that correct?
Correct. Town code doesn't allow us, if there is opposition to the project, for us to approve it at the minor residential level, which is why it is before you. Staff would be very amenable to working with the, the town arborist and the applicant and even neighbors as far as species. I think it's more location, I think, would be helpful as far as direction at this, at this meeting.
Okay. Just a follow-up. As far as I can tell from having heard Mr. Bieber, he's fairly happy with this and whether one tree went in there or not, and I may have misunderstood him, but I walked away believing that he was reasonably happy with what, what's going on there. So that leaves the property to the other corner, and whose representative is here tonight. But it isn't clear to me from the facts I've heard tonight that they were going, they're going to be impacted by this development. So I guess I'm looking to you folks who've looked into this, and just asking for your opinion on the impact of this planned change on that corner lot, and improvements on it, really.
I've gone through the neighborhood a couple times, and I, it's really hard to really assess how much those properties around Broadway are going to be impacted, because they are fairly close together and well-screened and without really taking jaunts through everybody's backyards. It's really hard to distinguish that, so I don't know that staff has a, an answer for you regarding, staff's opinion in regards to the impact of the proposal on the neighbors and whether screening is appropriate.
Let me, I understand, and perhaps I shouldn't have asked that question of you anyway, but, but what I guess, the facts I've heard is that that house, that corner is not impacted, and that's based on the testimony I've heard this evening. I've heard somebody say, "I don't like it, but the other side's going to come up with some trees that'll make me happy," period. So the only facts I've got at the moment do not lead me to believe that the other property will be impacted by this, unreasonably impacted by this development. So all I was really asking you is not for some fine opinion that we get all the big dollars for, just, am I missing something gross there? Is there some direct pattern running through the house that we didn't see when you got to the property, without, as you say, jumping around in the backyards?
No, and I think the reference that the, that, that 80 Broadway's representative was speaking to in regards to the, the Rollins concern is actually the master bedroom of the proposed addition is where the privacy concerns. I don't, I can't, I did sit down with Ms. Rollins in regards to her concerns, but she, she just doesn't want to see the prop, see the addition. As far as specifically, I have not received any documentation from her as far as how exactly this impacts her visibility, where and whatnot. She did not provide that information to staff.
Any other questions? No? Any comments or thoughts? Commissioner Talisfor?
Probably if anyone was going to be impacted in this development, it would be Mr. Bieber. And I did visit his site today, and I was on the deck, and I was, you know, I looked at the house on both sides. Well, from Mr. Bieber's deck, as he said, it's about 100 feet. From the neighbor on the left in the back, it's 120, and from the neighbor on the right, it's 110. And the trees around those sites are so thick, I was trying to wonder about privacy issues and who is going to be able to see into whose windows. I can't even ima, the angles, I mean, I'm not sure what the issue is. But, you know, it was something that you just said, Ms. Mosley, about that maybe she just didn't want to see any development there. And that's what I'm getting from this, period. I don't see why adding, if Mr. Bieber doesn't want another tree added, I don't see how that's going to enhance anything. It would force somebody to keep, you know, land, you know, trimming a tree so it doesn't go over someone else's fence or their garage roof, but that's just my personal opinion. So, you know, to have, to grant a suspension of this until we could mitigate a tree to be put, in my opinion, would really, I'd have to have some real impact to the neighbors that are really complaining. It would have to be, they look directly into my bedroom, they would have to suffer something that other people don't suffer, and I don't see, and I for one, don't see that here.
Okay. Any other comments or anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Talisfor.
And with that, I'll make a motion to approve Architecture and Site Application S-11-063 at 321, at 321 West Main Street. I have to, as required, let me, where am I? Where is that? Thank you. Yeah, thank you, right here. Okay, requesting approval of a second-story addition to a single-family residence in the Broadway Historic District on property zoned R-1D-LHP, APN number 51045002. Property owner Nicole and Ed Regginalley, and applicant Brian Esed Demete Construction. I can make the findings required for CEQA that this project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of the State Environmental Guidelines as adopted by the town. I can make the considerations that in review of Architecture and Site Application as required by Section 2920, 150 of the Town Code for Architecture and Site Applications, the considerations were all made in reviewing this application, and as required by Section 2980, 290 of the Town Code for Applications within a historic district. I would like to add, though, that I appreciate Mr. Demete saying that he would look at changing that window back, that I think really just sort of ties your whole back together, and that's what I would say.
Does the motion include approving the architectural?
Yes. Does it, yes, and approving the architectural and site. Thank you. Where is that? Architecture and site, sorry about that. Architecture and site applications subject to the conditions in Exhibit 3 and as shown in the development plans of Exhibit 8 with the modifications shown in the alternate sheets in Exhibit 9.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner O'Donnell, second. Any comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Not a comment, it's a question for the maker of the motion. I just want to make sure that I understand that you're deliberately not including in your motion anything with respect to any landscaping plans, that that's for the, any neighbors to work out however they want to work it out.
Yes, I, I don't have, I think those landscaping is just fine.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, are there appeal rights?
Yes, this decision is appealable to the town council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. There is a fee for filing an appeal, and appeal forms are located upstairs in the town clerk's office.
Okay, and as I mentioned, item number four has been withdrawn, so we are finished with our public hearings. And Ms. Bailey, are there any reports from community development?
Yes, I have an update of what happened at the last council meeting. The application at 1...
Oh, Ms. Bailey, if you could hold on. If I could just ask those in the chambers to take their conversation outside? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Update on the last town council meeting, the application at 16161 Short Road, that was the demo of the house and construction of a new house, that was appealed, your decision was appealed. Council heard that matter, and they upheld the decision of the Planning Commission to approve that application. The other application was Bill Hirschman's development on Los Gatos Boulevard. That was the, to amend the plan development to permit different types of uses within that building. Council said that the Planning Commission's and staff's recommendation to not approve the change was correct, we made the right decision based on policy, and that that was a town council's decision to overturn that, which they did, but they had a caveat in that, in that they wanted to not require a traffic study. So there is some limited retail that still needs to be there, otherwise a traffic study would have been required, but they wanted to emphasize that the Planning Commission did make the right decision.
Commissioner Bushwell?
And to clarify, that included moving the BMP off-site? Is that correct?
This is Hirschman's, it's that office building?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was wrong, wrong...
I know which one you're thinking of, so.
And just for clarification, on the decision that council made, it was a hybrid. So they didn't preclude retail, but instead of mandating a certain square footage of retail, the way that the revised compromised PD amendment was drafted and crafted that night was to restrict a certain square footage that had to be non-medical, and then as certain uses come in, close to time when they file the map, then they have to designate certain square footage as non-medical use. Doesn't necessarily have to be retail, although there was an indication that it's likely going to be that. So there will be deed restrictions on whatever building or square footage that the owner or designates at or about the time of the filing of the map that will be non-medical.
Any questions? Okay, and anything else to report? And under Commission Matters, I believe, I believe congratulations are in order for two of our commissioners as they renew their terms. Congratulations.
Can my fellow commissioners bear with me for just a second? A few days ago, Dave Flick passed away. If you didn't know, massive heart attack. If you knew Dave Flick, he did a lot of very fine developments in this town, including icing on the cake, Soto Works Building, the restoration of the corner at Le Boulangerie for the town plaza, and did a lot of good things for the town of Los Gatos. And so I always thought it was appropriate just to recognize on the Planning Commission record his passing and extend our condolences to Sherry and his two kids, David and Jessica.
And thank you, and I'm glad you brought that up, because his, part of his legacy will be those buildings that he left in this town, and he built a lot of them right after the earthquake. That was such a wonderful thing for that time.
Any commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Bushwell?
Susan's going to kill me, but I would like to wish my wife a happy 15th anniversary tonight, so.
Happy anniversary.
But, but you're here.
But... But I'm here, exactly.
So, I think I'm going to give you guys a gift, adjourn tonight's meeting right now. We're adjourned.